For the city council and not to exceed two minutes per person. No action or discussion may be taken by the city council during public comments on non-agenda items. To address council, please complete the white or yellow card and present it to the city secretary or designated prior to the meeting. All right, first up we have Mr. Robert.
Thank you. My name's Robert Battle. If you want to hear and read what I call objective reality and truth, I would suggest you go to Facebook page, Maynor Community Coalition. I wasn't planning to say this at the start, but I find it highly offensive that the mayor is saying a prayer. I'm one of these old people who thinks that Christians are supposed to be Christians 24/7. 24/7. If you're not a Christian 24/7, you're a fake Christian, you're a Sunday saint, you're a faux-Christian. You guys knowingly lie every second of every day. You're mean, cruel, petty, spiteful, and you know, you take delight in hurting people. That's not Christian to me. Now, I was kind of embarrassed at the Planning and Zoning Committee when it got canceled. And so the public comments just sort of disappeared. And everything just kind of got passed. I thought you wanted to work with the Planning and Zoning Committee, but apparently you don't even care what their opinion is. We're looking at a lot of stuff today that's very big and very important, and apparently the Planning and Zoning Commission is just out of the loop. And speaking of planning and zoning, Scott Dunlop is not on the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is what the Planning and Zoning Commission sheet should look like. He's not a member of that. In the same way that Scott Moore is not a member of the city council. You shouldn't be in this box, sir. That's deception. That's deceptive. Well, we've been doing that forever. Anyway, that's my advice on that. And let me mention that I sent some emails to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and this is how this kind of insidious thing kind of impacts. Sonia sent all of my emails to them and to Scott Dunlop. Now, I'm not sure why Sonia held those up instead of immediately forwarding them to the commissioners. She, they were in the packet, so they got to see him five minutes before the meeting. That's not the goal. And then they also had Scott Dunlop's on it. If I send an email to a commissioner, that really is a private email between me and them. It's not for the city to look at. Okay? I offered to give everybody a free email box, but you guys really don't want the people to reach them. And if you're tired of me talking, and I can see where it'd be frustrating, where you have to listen to me talk about how horrible you guys are, if, why don't we do like a debate? Let's do a debate. How about all you guys against me? Okay? And we'll do like an hour on one of the Facebook pages. And then you can explain what a great job you're doing, and I can explain why I think it's not so great, and why I think you're destroying our city with this comprehensive plan that is a bunch of total baloney, and you guys cannot even finish proofreading it. This is laughable. It's like doing a book report, but you go with the rough draft. And you're trying to crush us. Now, I filed two police reports on Father's Day. One was about some people that lied to the police. They lied to the police, and let me tell you, that is against the law. That's a crime. It's punishable by up to $2,000 fine and up to six months in jail. So we'll see what happens with that. I was escorted out of the park at the Juneteenth thing that I helped organize. And I think there's going to be interesting when the investigation shows what it is. Also, I filed a police report for destruction of public property because I think it was a concerted effort to kill the $500 tree that I donated. I donated a 15-foot tree to the park, and I think it was systematically killed by the mayor, the city manager, the public works director, and the park supervisor. And I filed the police report. I'm not sure what the penalties are. I gave that to the city to be a shade tree, and you guys couldn't even water it. The first year I kept it alive, I went there every other day to water that. And then you locked me out of the whole thing, and you killed the tree on purpose because it was a public safety hazard nearby. Yeah, right. Total pompous BS. Okay, now I wanted to talk about quite a few things on this, but of course, since you've cut everybody's time in half, or by two-thirds, out of efficiency. That's efficiency? I don't call that efficiency. I call that you systematically trying to learn and hear opposing views. You guys don't want to hear any input from people, and you don't want to tell the people what you're doing. I have never met anyone that's even heard of the comprehensive plan that you gave $318,000 to upfront for an 18-month project. Why would anyone do that? Scott Dunlop, why would somebody do that, I wonder? Then when they gave back $138,000 and had some benchmarks and public town hall meetings, you decided to just steal those from them because you were embarrassed because I spoke up because you guys pretended that you were doing things for your senior, and someone got embarrassed, and they canceled. To me, that's $50,000 ripoff. And in fact, you sent them home before they even finished. Pardon me? What's that?
Thank you. That's your time.
Is that five minutes? Okay, in the future, I'd like to know when three minutes is up. Thank you.
Next we have. This is for a regulation. Right now, right? Yeah. Do we put it up now? Ms. Rachel? Or do we bring her for four? We can bring her, we bring her right now, right? Four? Yeah. Okay, Ms. Rachel?
I have a presentation with my project.
Okay, so you're for the agenda, not right now? Okay, thank you. We'll get you. All right. Moving right along, number one, public hearings, conducted public hearing. Conducted public hearing on the first reading of an ordinance rezoning five lots on .23 acres more or less out of the south 40 feet of lot 6 through 10, block one, A E lanes addition, and being located at 707 Bachelor Street, Maynor, Texas, from single-family suburban SF-1 to two-family residential TF. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Are you closing a public hearing on item number one?
That's very much. Yeah, does a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm prompted to speak on that.
You can't speak from there.
Pardon me?
I need for you to be quiet. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Dunlop.
This is brilliant. The applicant hasn't provided the architectural renderings, and so once they do it, we'll repost for it, so we're just removing these from the agenda, so that's why it's closed. You're welcome to take public comments, but SaaS recommendation is just to close it, so then they'll start the process over once they're, have all the information that was requested.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing on item number one.
Excuse me, sir. Please have a seat.
Can you just say, just as I come over here?
Okay, I'm asking for you to have a seat.
Pardon me?
I'm asking for you to have a seat.
Okay, I just thought it was a public hearing, and just because it's closed, I thought I could still talk.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney. If you have someone from the public that would like to speak, you can have them speak if you'd like before closing it, or close it and just have it repost so that anyone interested in speaking can come back and speak when the item is reposted.
Yeah, which is what we were going to do, because the information will be here so they can have a more informed conversation about the item when it comes back with all the rest of the information.
Yes.
So that's why we want to close it and bring it back. Thank you. I think there was a motion on the floor?
Yes, I'll second.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace, second by Councilman Moreno. Any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Being not all in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Number two. Actually, this one we're pulling. Item number two. And then going right to number three. Conducted public hearing on first reading of an ordinance rezoning two lots on .973 acres more or less at 108 West Voice and 104 West Voice Street, Maynor, Texas, from single-family SF-1 to downtown business DB. And like to see if there's a motion to open, or it's open to postpone and leave open until July 19th for this item.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we leave open public hearing, item number three, and postpone to July 19th.
Have a motion on the floor by Councilman Moreno. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Councilwoman Weir. Any questions to the motion? No questions? All in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Number four. Conducted public hearing on first reading of a preliminary planned unit development site plan for Oakwood Track Development 300 and 331 lots on 113.4 acres more or less, and being located at 14418 North FM 973, Maynor, Texas. And you're here for a presentation, Ms. Rachel, but I also have here postpone and leave open to July 19th. You want to share some comments, sir?
So this, this item along with the other ones, the planning commission didn't have a quorum the other week, and so they didn't take this item up, and so that doesn't come with a recommendation, so that's why SaaS recommendation was to open the public hearing and hold it open until your July 19th meeting, the regular meeting, at which point hopefully P&amp;Z will have a quorum in there July, and they can have a recommendation for you. Again, you can hear from members of the public and have the presentation and do what you like with it, or you're welcome to just carry it over to July 19th.
Ms. Rachel? Are you fine with coming back on the 19th?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we leave open item number four and postpone to the July 19th regular city council meeting.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Moreno. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilwoman Wallace. Any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Being not all in favor? Opposed, motion passes. All right, number five, conducted public hearing on a subdivision concept for the New Haven, 278 lots on 90.3 acres more or less, being located near intersection of Greg Lane and FM 973. And, Mr. Dunlop, public hearing comments? Number five?
But can you pull up the site plan? Please? My name's Robert Battle, by the way. Are you able to, you can't pull it up?
No, sir. You're talking to council.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were a regional leader, and we can't even show the site plan of these people? Is that serious? Do you realize that Rockdale is more advanced than you are? Rockdale, they have three cameras, and they can show the things. Actually, okay, so let me do this from memory. I thought New Haven was out, going to do some outstanding stuffs. For a little while, they were going to put two ping pong tables, 10 to 20 parking places. They were going to have a nice trail, and supposedly they were going to meet with the park committee. But apparently, I don't know if they ever met with the park committee, because apparently they've taken a giant step backwards. Now, the park is completely reconfigured. I didn't see any parking places on there. For a little while, we were going to have 10 to 20, thanks to me. But apparently, thanks to the park committee, now we're back to zero parking places? There's a little shrimpy little thing they put on there. They redesigned the whole park, basically. And they said if it's contiguous, if it's a contiguous space, then it's okay. So they've got a long little strip. It's a little, it's a walkway. And they want to count that as a park? So I think, A, this is really offensive that you're not even showing the rendering, because the rendering is going backwards. Instead of getting better, it's getting worse and worse and worse, kind of like Monarch Ranch is doing. So anyway, I don't know how we can even really talk with any authority. Do you have that in your, in your packet, maybe? Oh, I know you can't answer. Sorry, gee whiz. Actually, it's a public hearing. You can answer. Do you have that rendering in your packet of the park, sir?
We have the same information.
Pardon me?
The information is available to the public on the website. We have the same.
I didn't ask you that, sir. I asked you if you have it in your packet. Pardon me?
This is our business meeting. You're going to, you're going to conduct yourself in a respectful manner. I said, we have the information that's available to the public. It's all on our website.
Okay. I'll take that as a yes. So you, in here in this room, don't get to look at it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Dunlop?
So this item, it was at the planning commission last week, so they obviously didn't take it up, but with it being subdivision by city code, they're automatically approved if they've been approved by our engineers. So it comes with an approval recommendation just by code. The, the concept plan is consistent with the, the PUD. Concept plans don't show the detail of level of parking spaces and park improvements. They would submit a site plan for that, which is an administrative process, but we could always meet with the parks committee too on that when that's submitted and work with that one, but concept plans is really high level, just shows where their land uses are to make sure it's consistent with the zoning, their phasing, and their major roads, and that's all it generally shows.
Any questions, council?
Were there any comments from any of the neighboring residents?
Not specific to the PUD, but one of the neighbors, Mr. Lutz, from the Lutz Carrillo property there behind the school district, they contacted us kind of regarding the roadway alignment, because that goes from Mustang Valley north of the senior high school through their property, through Main RC's property into New Haven, and so with both developments going on, that road is mainly driven by Mustang Valley in its terms of construction. But with them receiving this notice, you know, they reached out to us to get some more clarity. They've been working well with the KB Homes developer for Mustang Valley, and they've had off and on conversation with Ashton Gray, who's doing New Haven. And so I believe it's last week, we set up a stakeholder meeting with the various property owners up there, so Main RSD, Aqua, New Haven, KB, and the city, and there's about 20 people in it. And we went through all of their concerns regarding the roadway and its alignment. And all of that was handled well. We just discussed, you know, driveways approaches, they were looking for easements, water stubouts, wastewater stubouts, so that way we can all move forward together.
So they're, they're good with the conversations?
Yes.
Yes. Other questions, council?
Was Mr. Lutz in attendance to that meeting with the stakeholders?
Yes, him and his wife were.
I'll take questions or a motion.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing on item number five.
Have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mayor Protem, Emily Hill. Any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Being not all in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Move right along to number six. Conducted public hearing on levy and assessments in improvement area number three of Main Heights Public Improvement District. Mr. Dunlop? Okay.
Good evening, council members. Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney. With item number six, you have your PIT consultants, bond counsel, underwriters' counsel, and finance director, and also PIT administrator. And I will go ahead and have bond counsel come up and present item number six, and then bond counsel will also be presenting item number seven, and everyone is here to answer questions.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Gregory Miller with Bickerstaff, Keith Doggato Acosta. And I'm here tonight as your bond counsel to speak about two items that you have, actually four, that are interrelated. Two public hearings and then the two action items. Taken together, these items are for the financing of public improvements in a particular area of the Mainor Heights Public Improvement District, being improvement area number three. And back, if you recall, Mainor Heights was created in 2018. The first series of bonds to finance public improvements in that district were 2021. And so the developer has requested, and there have been conversations for the issuance of a new series of bonds to finance public improvements in improvement area number three. In order to finance those bonds in accordance with the PIT statute, the city levies assessments against the parcels in the district, particularly tonight, improvement area number three. And those assessments that will be collected on an annual basis will be used to pay for the bonds that will be issued. So this first item is matters relating to the levy of the assessment. And back on June 7th, city council called a hearing for there to be this item tonight to consider the levy of assessments. They adopted a proposed assessment rule, which is now going to be finalized and considered tonight. And that assessment rule basically breaks up the individual parcels in the area and says which, what amount each parcel is going to owe in terms of assessments. This process is set up by statute, and all the steps have been followed, followed. And so tonight, after setting the hearing on June 7th, the hearing is tonight. And so the first hearing will be to consider the adoption of a final assessment rule and levying of the assessments. The second hearing that you have tonight is for the actual issuance of the bonds that will be paid for by those assessments. So it's basically a two-step deal. First hearing is to levy the assessments. Second hearing is to sell the bonds. The bonds are going to be in a par amount of 4.28 million, and they will be used, as discussed, to fund public improvements within improvement area number three. So I don't, I think we have to have one hearing at a time. The first hearing will be for the levy of assessments. The second hearing, which I believe is item seven, will be for the issuance of the bonds. I do want to point out, as, as your attorney suggested, we have the underwriter here to talk about pricing for the bond sale that happened this morning, as well as Chris Lane, your financial advisor. And then we also have Rob from P3, who knows the ins and outs of the property characteristics and what improvements are being built and how much funds are being allocated for each public improvement. So with that, I believe we're at the public hearing, and I will yield to.
Questions, council? If there's no questions, I'll take a motion.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we close, close the public hearing for item number six.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Moreno. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mayor Protem, Emily Hill. Any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? No question. It's all in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Conducted public hearing on issuance of improvement area number three bonds for the Mainor Heights Public Improvement District. Yes, sir?
I was just going to be here in case there are any questions.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I believe at this time, we could have Chris Lane come up and provide some information regarding the pricing that took place, and underwriter as well. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Chris Lane, yes, city's financial advisor. This morning, we went out for bid for the Mainor Heights Improvement Area Three project for $4,280,000. We received three different orders. All the funds, all three funds wanted to buy the bonds. Yesterday, there was another PID that was priced, and we compared that to yours. You did better than the other PID that sold yesterday. I checked everything with my underwriter. We double-checked the numbers. Everything falls in line. It was a very good pricing today. The true interest cost came out to a 572, and the arbitrage rate was a 544. That's about the average rate on the bonds. We got everybody's cost. Everything's, we verified all the costs, and we're waiting for a couple more invoices, but other than that, we did really well today.
I think you always do really well. Questions? Council? You have the magic touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take questions or a motion.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing on item number seven.
Have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem, Emily Hill. Any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? No questions to the motion? All in favor? Opposed, motion passes, you answer. Move right along, consent agenda items, all of, all the items on a consent agenda, consider to be self-explanatory by council, and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on the items unless requested by the mayor or a council member. Let's see, there will be no, in which the item will be removed, and consent agenda will be considered separately. Number eight, consideration discussion, possible action on approved the city council minutes of June 7, 2023, city council regular meeting. Number nine, consideration discussion and possible action on accepting the May 2023 departmental reports. Consideration discussion. Number 10, consideration discussion, possible action on a purchase agreement with Vinnie Paul, Mark Gundy, and is it Arthy? Ready, Mark Gundy, for a water, wastewater easement with a temporary construction easement. Consideration discussion, possible action on a purchase agreement with Mike Edwards, is it Swire? Swire and Krista Marie Swire, trustees of the Leder Trust for a water easement and temporary construction easement. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on the purchase agreement with Maynor Elite Residences LLC for a wastewater easement and temporary construction easement. Is there a motion on the floor?
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda by Councilwoman Wallace. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Weir. Any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? No questions to the motion? All in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Moving right along to number 13 and number 14, we're going to pull from the agenda. Number 15, consideration discussion and possible action on an ordinance rezoning two lots on .297 acres more or less at 108 West Voice and 104 West Voice, Maynor, Texas, from single-family SF-1 to downtown business DB.
So this item, item 15, and then also the following one, 16, those items, since they weren't taken up by Planning and Zoning Commission last week, was recommending to postpone to your July 19th meeting.
15 and 16?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we need to, since I read it, do we need to motion out of it? Say again? Okay, first reading, consideration discussion, and possible action on a first reading of preliminary planned unit development site plan in Oakwood Track Development, 331 lots on 113.4 acres more or less, and being located at 14418 North FM 973, Maynor, Texas. We have a motion to postpone until We have a motion to postpone until July 19th?
Okay, Mayor. Mayor, council, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone item, so I can do both, right? And you want me to go ahead and read the whole thing, too? Or?
15 and 16.
Okay, item 15 and 16 to July 19th, regular City Council meeting.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Moreno. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Wallace. Any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Then, all in favor? Pose, motion passes. All right, moving right along, number 18, consideration discussion, possible action to enter.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, I'm sorry. Consideration discussion, possible action on a subdivision concept for the New Haven 278 lots on 90.3 acres, more or less, and being located near the intersection of Greg Lane and FM 973.
Sure. So this item, we had the public hearing on it. Like I said, it has been approved by our engineers, so we're recommending approval. Planning Commission didn't get to discuss this one, but by city code, it was automatically approved if there's no quorum as a subdivision plat. So if you have any questions, additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any count, questions, counsel, regarding New Haven concept plan?
Do we know what, what was overrode by engineering since it was approved from code? Because you said that it?
Sure. So trying not to get into too much, but the way, because of state statute, you know, certain actions have to occur by the municipal authority within a certain amount of time. And so when we, when that was passed at the state level, we revised our subdivision code to be in compliance. And because no quorums happen from time to time, and if we're statually required to take an action on a certain day, if there's no quorum, we had to have a mechanism for action to still occur without that quorum. And so if the item, basically, however the engineers had deemed it is what the action would be. And so in this instance, the, they, because they follow it under alternative review as a review process, it didn't go before P and Z until, and before you all, until it was ready to be approved. But in other instances, if they follow the standard process, the engineer's comments would be before the P and Z, and they would deny it based on engineering comments. And so without a quorum, the default would be to deny based on city code. But with this one being approved because of city code, it was automatically approved. There are four other plats that night, but also there's like some preliminary plats and final plats that are all just deemed approved because there was no action by the planning commission. But as it?
It's a sort of default in case planning is on, can't meet for extended period of time.
Correct, yeah. It protects the city because without that, say if a plat went under standard review, and it had review comments from our engineers, that things needed to be fixed, and, you know, action had to occur on the 30th day, and the planning commission came to meet, they didn't have a quorum. If they didn't take action by state law, it's automatically approved, whether we have comments on it or not. So that's why our city code says the action that occurs, whether we have a quorum or not, is the action that the engineers provided. So in that instance, it would have been denied. But for these ones, for this one before you, it was already approved by the engineers. So it was okay that, without the quorum at P and Z, it was approved, and you all are able to approve it.
Any questions? Or a motion?
Are you going to, during the site planning, you can come to us, to the parks committee? So that way we can discuss the parks and parking lot?
Yes, we could do that, yeah. When we get, when they get a little closer to what they're going to put into their parks, usually that'll come, when they get sort of into construction planning. And, I mean, that may not even, I think they're, they're kind of, they're larger park, Park B is in phase two, so that may not even be initial phase. And that's the one that had the proposed parking and the more of the amenities in it.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
I have one.
Yeah.
So under the engineering review, the things that were marked off, or is that what they were able to do? And the things that weren't, is what needs, still needs to be done, or the other way around?
So they satisfied all the engineer comments. So they're all kind of provided there, starting from the initial first round of comments, and how they respond in second round, and so forth, until you get towards the end of your packet dated May 10th of 2023. There's a conformance letter that they've satisfied. So that last bit there, it's should be pages 304 and 305 of your backup. Those are the outstanding comments, and then blue is how they responded, and those responses met our code. And so the engineers were able to issue a conformance letter on May 10th.
Questions or a motion?
Mayor, council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a subdivision concept for the New Haven 278 lots on 90.3 acres, more or less, and being located near the intersection of Greg Lane and FM 973, Maynor, Texas.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wallace. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Weir. Any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? Then, all in favor? Pose, motion passes. Let's see, number 18, consideration discussion, possible action to enter into a software service agreement with Camino Inc. for permit and licensing processes.
Cool. So over the past few weeks, I was working with this organization, this business here, Camino, for sort of permitting assistance. Because right now, you know, we use the MyGovernment Online system, which has been great for online permitting. It's really facilitated, you know, residents and businesses and anyone trying to develop within the city. But especially for residents, permitting can be a little overwhelming. You know, they don't know all of the steps they have to take, the documents they need, what their fees could possibly be. So they'll reach out to us a lot. And of course, my department helps them. I mean, they'll be on the phone sometimes for quite a while, or in the lobby for quite a while, and that's totally fine, and will still occur. But this, this company here, they sort of help create custom checklists that people can go through if they're, if they want to. And again, like, if they don't want to go through this process, they can still call us. We're not going to just say, go through this process. We'll still help them. So as it says, it's a development guide. Does this not work anymore? I hope to do this here, too. So it says it creates a personalized checklist, and it could be used across multiple departments. It includes all the forms and resources and fees. And so you kind of see how the way it works on the side, if you're able to read that. You know, it says, you know, new custom home, new accessory dwelling unit, new addition. So the way it would work is people would access this before they got into the MyGovernment system. Because once you get into MyGovernment, you just see a list of our applications. And you kind of, you know, sometimes people choose the wrong one, or, you know, they need a little assistance. And so they would access this first, and then it's maybe a little easier for them to be like, okay, I need an accessory structure. And so they would click on that. And then it just only shows them items related to an accessory structure permit. So it'll ask them sort of questions, so like, for an accessory structure, it's like, is it over 120 square feet? And if they put no, it'll just pop up and say, hey, you don't need a permit. Or it might, you know, come up and say, are you adding any electrical or plumbing? And if they say no, it'll say, hey, you don't need a permit. You know, maybe just follow these guidelines for where you place it on your property and not put it in an easement or something. But if you say yes, it's over 120 square feet, then it'll come up and say, okay, you're going to do electric? Are you going to do plumbing in it? And if you say, you know, yes, it'll come up and say, okay, you'll need also an electrical permit. And so then it'll go through and say, again, for an accessory structure, it has to be this far away from your back setback or your side setback. And then it'll say, you know, I should go through the system or the steps, you know, hey, you'll need a plot plan. You'll need to know, you know, if you have a survey of your property, what your lot coverage is. So just sort of giving them the steps, like answering the questions that we're going to have for them. So if they just applied and went to apply for an accessory structure with us, you go through the whole application on MyGov, and then it says, you know, submit a plot plan, submit this. And sometimes people don't know what that even is. And so with this system, you can kind of put in, you know, examples of what we're looking for and better information so residents know, like, oh, and this is plot plan, that means my survey, or what they're looking for. And we can insert, you know, specifically portions of our city code. So it's sort of like, your lot for residential lot can't be more than 50% building coverage. And we know right now that's buried in thousands of pages of city code. So by going through the system, you know, with the accessory structure example, they're only seeing what's relevant to the permit they're requesting. So it just helps to keep it from being an overwhelming process for them. I mean, it's, you know, really easy for staff to use. It's easily configurable, so as we, you know, if we get new permits or add new processes to this, so with it being used in multiple apartments, one of the things we want to do with MyGov is start adding more of our licenses on there, so like our TOVC licenses, so they don't have to bug UVA so much. And again, you know, that process could be in here, too, of like, what they'll need to submit before they get to the actual application. So it's like, it's a guided walk-through, includes all the steps, highlights what's important, which would prevent for errors. So it's actually, you know, it's residential projects, commercial projects, signed permits. So it really just shows them exactly what they need for the permit they're requesting. And on the staff side, and, you know, promotes efficiency and savings for both staff and applicants, for our residents. It's kind of highlighting it's multifunctional. It'd mostly be used by my department, but as things grow, you know, licensing of the departments can get pulled into it pretty easily. They have built-in reports, you know, because they're providing, in our development services, multiport to see how well it's being utilized. They kind of, you know, fill in there how much, you know, estimated savings is provided to the city in terms of staff time, because they have those sort of metrics, like so many people use it for, you know, so many hours that prevented that much worth of time of someone maybe being in the lobby. Many cities use it. Travis County is about to roll it out for their permitting system. It's been used in McKinney. It's, there's a couple cities around. And then one of the things that, too, that kind of wasn't on there, we put our fees into it. And so when you go through the process and it shows at the end, like, you'll need these, you know, three permits and these documents, it'll give you your estimated fee cost, too. So before you even get there, you're like, oh, my gosh, my, my permit's going to cost me $10,000, like, whoa. Or it's, oh, it's only, you know, 150 bucks. So it's just gives them an idea before they apply. We go through the whole process, and then they suddenly get an invoice after spending how much time with us. So it's just more information upfront for the residents. And then at the, then after that, then it would link to the MyGovernment side. And of course, like I said, residents, whoever, they can just skip this, call us and ask us all the same questions, we're still there. And then people don't have to go through the system, so if, you know, a volume home builder knows how to submit, they don't have to sit going through Camino every time. They can just go straight to the MyGovernment site and apply like they always do. The yearly cost, it's $9,999 for a five-year contract, so just under $10,000. There's not an escalation to that, but it's for 60 months. Oh, and also the fees are covered in our current technology fees. So with every application, we assess a rate between $10 and $50, depending on what the application is. And that's what goes to fund MyGovernment online, but there's, we usually collect far more, not far, but a pretty high amount than what that system costs. So as I put on the summary form last fiscal year, we collected almost $41,000 in technology fees, and this year about $23,000. And the MyGovernment system costs us about like $800 a month.
If the five years is locked in?
Mm-hmm, but at that rate?
No, I mean, like if, let's say, two years go by, and we look at the cost savings, and we're paying about $10,000 a year, but the cost savings is $40. People aren't using it, something like that. We're still locked in for five years?
I do believe so. Yeah, I mean, it talks about renewing after the five years.
Do you have, have you had enough situations to where you believe it'll be highly utilized?
Yes, yeah, my department, they spend a lot of time helping and talking with people that, you know, this could help offset that.
How many, how many staff members use, like, would use this?
So, I mean, I have three staff. So we have Mandy, who is our development service supervisor, and then Jessica and Al, who are the permit tax. But, I mean, this system would be used by, like, the residents and anyone applying. But they're the ones who, you know, take the phone calls and the walk-ins and, you know, help people through the permitting. And then oftentimes, they, we have a computer in our lobby there, Public Works, that they'll do the applications or stand there and step with people on how to fill out the applications and, you know, sort through their documents on what they need and what they don't need. So this type of system helps probably cover a big percentage of, of those applicants if they have a easier, more understandable step-by-step guide on what's needed for each permit.
Yeah, I've actually, counsel, I've actually heard about this before, because I work for the City of Austin, and we, you know, we, I deal with this. And so like, the City of Austin one is actually very confusing. So this one is very user-friendly, so from what I've heard.
Yeah, and Travis County is about to roll out theirs. They have a contract with Camino, so they've been putting it into their system.
Scott, how much manpower hours would you estimate that this system would save you?
I mean, it's going to save a couple hours every week. Like I said, there's phone calls and people walking in. There'll be the reports for it, and we can see the efficacy of it as we go on with it. But, I mean, Mandy today, I mean, she was talking with a guy for like an hour about various things, so.
Does this give, could someone take what they pulled from Camino and put all the numbers together, and then come to the city when it's time for them to complete the rest of the project and say, well, look, it says that my cost is going to be this much, but then in actuality, it's a few dollars more. Of course, they won't mind if it's a few dollars less. But I guess with the, is there a, what is it called? Just a kind of a level of variance between the two that kind of says, like, this is the estimate in here, this is not the actual, or prices may vary, or something like that?
Yeah, I believe it does say that it's sort of an estimate, but we would load all of our fees into it, so it would know, because it, like I said, it goes through, and we'll say, okay, you have an accessory structure that's going to have electric, and it'll know exactly what those costs are. Same thing as MyGovernment Online. I mean, that, we loaded all of our fees into that. And so my, our permit tax, like, had the fees, but it's all just aggregate. It's pretty, pretty straightforward once, you know, the fee schedule, so.
Yeah, it's just like, just clicking things, honestly, just feeding them, you know, it's pretty much how it works.
Yeah, the, the variable part would come from the inspections, especially for like a larger project, if they went through the system. I mean, that would have to get worked out, because inspections are really dependent on the scale and the complexity of the project. And that, that's going to be hard for the software to know. I mean, even now, like, if someone just brought a plan set in, and they were like, you know, what's the fee for this? Like, that would actually take us a while to figure out. We don't actually do the final fees until it's gone through all the plan review process. So our building official who's doing the plan review will know the scale and complexity of the project and say, okay, this is 20 inspections, or this is 100 inspections, based on what they're trying to do. So that part's variable. That part's variable. But again, the simple projects, you know, one-off electric permit, accessory structure, those almost always have the same, it's like one or two inspections. It's just once you get, the larger the project, the more variable the inspection rate could be.
So this is something I could do if I wanted to add, extend my back porch?
There'd be a porch and patio in there, it's an existing permit we have, which that one frequently uses a lot of manpower, cause we get a lot of things drawn on napkins and they're like, here you go. Actually, we usually, porches and patios, uh, those usually get caught by code enforcement. They see them getting built and they go, hey, you don't have a permit. And the guy's like, I don't know how to get a permit, so that's very common.
How, um, not how accessible, but where would this be advertised to make sure that we get the most use of it within our sixty months if we get it?
Sure, so, um, right now, like when you access our applications page on the website, um, you know, it lists the different types of applications. I mean, a bunch, a couple of them just redirect you straight to the my government site, um, cause that's what they're through, but it's easier if someone's like, like I have a building permit, that goes to my gov, or it's like I have a subdivision plan, you click on that, still goes to my gov. But we would put in there, just basically like, you know, permitting assistance, development guide, however we can phrase it. Um, I'm sure Camino has history on ways to market it, you know, get people through that process. But we can also put it on social media too, I mean, it's pretty easy to post these types of things that, you know, that we have this resource available.
I like how it says it would offer that training for residents like once a month or something like that for an hour, I think.
I think that's a, like the, yeah. That's part of the, the service package, but I think that's the.
Oh, yeah, so it's two-hour virtual training webinar that all customers can access, okay.
Yeah, that's the, on the staff side. Seventy-five years, or seventy-five hours in the first year, and then twenty-five, uh, per year and subsequent years. So if you got like additional staff or, you know, if the existing staff couldn't train them and you wanted to bring Camino in, you can, part of the package is twenty-five hours and years is two, three, four, and five.
Could you do a video recording and put it on the website for us?
Yeah, I was about to ask that, because we, we do that. We, yeah, we record like, um, training videos and then sometimes we'll, you know, reach out to like residents who want to learn about it. Mostly I deal with contractors, so we'll have like a training for contractors, um, how to use like that, our program.
Yeah, we could look into that and Camino may have that already, sort of just as promo-type videos, but we can see what they have and what we're able to do. I mean, we have a branding company that can assist. There, there was, their typical contract is three, but then the cost was fifteen thousand a year. So over time, and this does cost a little bit more, but with being under ten thousand, I mean, there's really, I think this is the only kind of company that does this, but if you go over ten thousand, we're supposed to try to find other bids and do all of that, but this is really the only company I've seen that does that. And so we worked with them to do five years below ten thousand versus three years at fifteen. So there's about five thousand dollar difference there.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a software services agreement with Camino Inc. for the permit and licensing processes.
I second.
This doesn't replace the my gov.
No, not at all. It's just, uh, enhances it, cause it provides the additional guide for how to, you know, apply for your permits before you get into the permitting system.
Other questions to the motion? Ben, an all in favor? Pose. Motion passes six, five, five to one. Uh, we're gonna jump down to number twenty-four, get some of these easier ones out of the way. Consideration discussion, possible action on a proposal of, um, for the project of city branding and ongoing communication services. Number twenty-four.
Good evening, council members, Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney. I am not Scott Jones, but, uh, but we did assist, uh, city legal did assist with the, um, putting together the RFP, which is attached. One of the things that wasn't attached in your backup though was a service agreement template. But, um, the RFP and the, um, proposed contractor is attached for your consideration. It's my understanding, based on, again, emails between city legal and city staff, that there was actually a committee that reviewed the RFPs that were submitted, including the city manager and your chief of police, along with your economic development director. And what is provided to you is the contractor that city staff is recommending, which is, and I know I'm gonna slaughter their name. Chicken Nango? I think this was a test on that, but that is the, um, that is who city staff is recommending based on, uh, it's mine, again, there was a scoring that took place and discussions that took place. And, uh, so the recommendation that's, uh, that's here for you is to, um, and I will make some revisions if necessary. It's as written, the recommendation is for you to authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into the executive, into and execute a service agreement with Chicken Nango, substantially similar to the attached professional service agreement template. And again, I apologize, but the service agreement template is not attached. However, this is a service agreement template that has already been approved and utilized by city staff and city legal. So the motion that you could make is in accordance with the, um, service agreement that's already in place. Or what you could do is, um, delete that part of the motion and just have it come back to you once negotiations actually take place between the city manager and Chicken Nango.
So do we have our motion on the floor? Yeah, one or two options is to, um, uh, use the language regarding the service agreement template that's already approved by city staff, approved and city staff is using it. Or, um, have them remove that language and have them come back again with the template, which then would delay the implementation.
It wouldn't be the template, it would actually be the negotiated agreement. So you are authorizing the city manager to negotiate the agreement, the agreement would just come back to you instead of him executing it. If you, if you wanted to see the actual agreement.
Questions or motion? Questions or motion?
I'm sorry, you said that we, um, asked for a submit and post a motion to either approve or with an agreement to come later?
Right, the, the motion would be to approve the city manager to enter into negotiations with Chicken Nango and, um, bring back the service agreement for city council consideration.
Other questions? Just remember the timeline for the projects that we're trying to do, that would delay us. Two to three weeks plus, um, and maybe cause for us not to do some of the work we wanted to do.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that city council provide authorization to the city manager to negotiate, enter into and execute a service agreement with Chicken Nango, substantively similar to the attached professional service agreement template for an amount that will be less than fifty thousand to provide the services described in the proposed, in the proposal twenty-two-three dash seven, provided by Chicken Nango, and satisfy the project goals described in the city of Maine request for proposals for branding and ongoing communications.
And, Councilor Moreno, if you can, um, amend your motion to not say the attached, but just in accordance with.
To amend, okay, amend my emotion and scratch out the attached.
Attached, thank you.
We have a motion on board by Councilwoman Moreno, um, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Weir, any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? No questions, all in favor? Pose, motion passes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Think we're on nineteen? Or eighteen, nineteen? Consider, consideration discussion, possible action on a stormwater fee implementation, uh, scope of work.
All right, um, so as I'm sure you all recall, uh, we've had a couple discussions regarding the stormwater fee, the proposal that, um, Reftalis has been working on. I think the last time we met was back on April nineteenth, um, so about two months ago. And we got the, y'all provided the feedback about the varying rates, um, for residential versus commercial. When other cities adopted their stormwater fees and like the populations at the time that they adopted it. And if a lower rate was approved, you know, how that affect the general fund and transfers into the general fund. And then potentially working this fee into our upcoming fiscal year, that begins October one. The original, uh, scope of work provided, um, with Reftalis, um, without the back and forth and the time, um, was expended. And so kind of continue this, you know, finishing up phase one and getting into phase two, if you all so choose. Kind of requires this amended scope of work, uh, for forty-nine thousand, um, which would allow them to continue validating the fees in response to your feedback from April nineteenth, uh, as well as, you know, moving the fee forward to completion, including, um, public outreach communications, uh, and integration into our billing system if it is approved. So this, this cost would, um, help finalize the fee.
Amended, um, or a new scope of work, uh, how would that work in the timeline? In regards to, um, our, our consideration of, of a bond and that fee, that fee structure for later on.
Uh, so this would be a new revenue source. Right now, what's being considered for the bond, none of the, there isn't any drainage. No, um, cause right now that was all water and wastewater projects, um, and roadways, uh, right away. There weren't any drainage projects included in that. They cert, this fee can certainly, you know, if we do roadway projects, again, those aren't really included, but maybe if you're doing, you know, wastewater and an easement, that happens to also be a bar ditch, you know? These funds can go on top of that, um, to help, you know, do additional work. It's like, hey, you're already digging up the line to replace a wastewater line that was funded through a bond. Here's some revenue from the, the drainage fees, you can also, you know, repair the coverts. But right now, yes, the bond does include drainage work, so this would just be revenue, uh, should it be implemented for those? Yeah, unfortunately at this time, since we don't have like that drainage master plan or sort of a capital improvements plan specific to drainage, we didn't have projects for the bond.
Other questions, council?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a stormwater fee implementation scope of work.
I second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim, Mammy Hill, any questions to the motion?
How long would this new amount of funds get us through?
Uh, this is, uh, they said it would get us through completion, and so that is the intent.
That's the anticipated completion date is September of this year?
They're still working with the goal of having this being able to be implemented for October one, um, but we can, so that's a little. Yes, sir. But of course, I mean, that's, that's the goal, I mean, if, if it's January one, it's, that's what it is. I mean, the, the fee should be appropriate and acceptable to you all, so how, whenever that happens is.
That's what you say now, and then you'll come in September or October and say.
How much we send them back to bring answers to us?
Yes.
Because every time we give the feedback, that's, uh, two to four weeks, uh, of time to come back. And so that could, that could change the scope of work. Not saying that if you've got questions, you can ask them to send. That sometimes impacts the project completion time. Other questions?
Is this, um, oh, is this one where, um, this stormwater fee would be incorporated into which one of our residents' bills? Is it in our?
Either utility bill, your water, wastewater, trash bill.
And after they do their, their study and the work, then that's when they would come back and let us know this is the analysis from the smallest house to the biggest commercial property?
Correct, yeah, so they'll, uh, work on, you know, the, the data management, you know, getting more of the information that you all requested. So this doesn't authorize them to go implement the fee, that'll still come back to you with all of the information you requested and how the fee gets implemented, so there's still that stopgap of if you decide it doesn't work. You can stop it, it's ultimately your decision, so, um, yeah, uh, through this process, you know, once you, you land on a fee and the, uh, a rate table that is appropriate, then they would kind of go towards, um, you know, task six and seven and eight and nine, so like, you know, the public outreach portion of it, which, could also be a variable, I'm sure they, they work in a certain number of meetings into that cost, but if you all decide you want twice as many meetings, that may impact the, the rate. But they have, um, extensive knowledge with public outreach, Reftalis does, they have already all the materials and they. Already all the materials and they know what to do for that to help uh inform the public and receive any feedback. And then once that's happening, it can be incorporated into the billing system, you know, with finance and um our company that handles that.
Thank you.
Is this already um an item that can easily be funded in the budget or?
Yes. Yeah, it shouldn't, um I mean, our revenue is fine, I haven't heard red flags.
Uh no questions, uh all in favor? Posen, motion passes unanimously, thanks, sir, moving right along to number twenty. Consideration discussion, possible action on a coordinated sign plan for Presidential Meadows Retail Center.
Sure, so this one um is a little unique for y'all, but maybe for some of you, remember your time on planning commission, you may have seen one or two of these. Um this is before you all, again, because planning commission didn't have a quorum last week. Um and this building in particular um already has tenants occupying it, um looking for their permanent signage. Um and this is something that you all can, you know, make an approval on or modifications on, um it doesn't have to be solely planning commissions, that's why we put it before you. Um because they didn't want those retailers to have to wait another month to get their permanent signage when right now they have a couple banners up. Um and they are just waiting for approval of this plan. Um so what these are for is if you have a building with four or more tenant spaces. Or if you have a development with two or more buildings, they're required to have a coordinated sign plan um to help. Keep the signs in a general coordinated fashion, um you know, it doesn't really restrict, you know, colors and things like that, but. The overall size of a sign is regulated, where signs are placed is regulated, so create some more uniform look. Um and yeah, you can see here on the bottom one, it just says sign face area, so that's the, you know, seven locations. Where a sign on that building could be placed, so if a retailer came in and said, hey, I want to put a sign on the back of the building. We wouldn't let them because that's not a permitted sign area, um so it just helps the building have that coordinated look. Um and just if you have questions on it, it's it's pretty standard one, there's nothing um that excessive that they're asking for. So it's the staff level where we were recommending approval.
Any questions or or a motion?
Mayor Council like to make a motion that we approve a coordinated site plan for the Presidential Meadows Retail Center.
We have a motion on for by Councilmember Moreno, is there a second?
Second.
It's great.
Second by Councilwoman Weir, any questions to the motion?
Does this fall in line with the other um plaza looking places that we have in Mainor already?
Yes, yes, for the most part, I said, it's it's nothing uh excessive, um and I should point out, I apologize, uh this is Presidential Meadows, it's not in the city limits. But we do regulate signs in our ETJ, um so that's why this this building and these tenant spaces aren't in the city, but. We do have an ability to regulate where and how they place their signs.
Other questions?
Do they have to have that, like the one standalone sign for when if there's multiple tenants or two buildings also?
Uh no, that's not required, and this this property doesn't have that, they don't have a freestanding sign, um if they did. Um they could either, would have incorporated it into this sign plan, um but without it being in the sign plan, actually just defaults to city code. Um which actually might say they have to do it through the coordinate sign plan, um but they they weren't planning one. But we spoke with them when they submitted this to ask if that was part of their plan, and they said no.
Okay.
All in favor? Oppose, motion passes. Twenty-one, consideration discussion, possible action on a letter of intent for underwriting services for special assessment bonds. And G seventeen Mainor, uh excuse me, Mustang Valley Public Improvement District.
Mayor Councilmembers Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney, um what you have in front of you is a letter of intent as previously. Um since you previously approved the Ma- the Mustang Valley PID, uh which was approved on June seventh. Now we're ready to start um meeting with the developer and discussing um actual PID bond issuance and pricing. And so one of the things under your PID policy is to select an underwriter per PID. Um so because of prior engagements that we've had and their expertise. City staff is recommending that the the underwriter be selected, the underwriter selected be FMS bonds. And um we, again, in accordance with your PID policy, we have checked with the developer and they have not provided any um. Oppositions, thank you. And we do have the underwriter or a member of the underwriter team here, if you have any questions or if you'd like him to say a few words.
Would you like to say a few words?
Mayor Council, uh Robert Rivera, FMS Bonds. It is a big responsibility that we take seriously to underwrite your public improvement district bonds. We know that these are very difficult, tricky transactions to to maneuver and. Our level of expertise across the state is unmatched and it's, again, our exclusive focus is on special districts, so. Uh we're we're grateful for that responsibility and look forward to future years and future projects and continued positive growth for the uh for the city of Mainor.
Alright, council, any questions regarding this?
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you. I'll take questions regarding the uh the bond underwriting or a motion.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we um. The city council select MFS bonds to provide underwriting service for the Mustang Valley PID and approve the letter of intent. Oh, FMS bonds, I am, my apologies, to provide underwriting service for the Mustang Valley PID. And approve the letter of intent for underwriting services for special assessment bonds and G seventeen. And authorize the city manager to ex- execute the letter of intent.
We have a motion on for by Councilwoman Wallace, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Emily Hill, any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion, being that all in favor? Posen, motion passes unanimously, thank you all again. Let's see, we'll ride along to number twenty-two. Consideration discussion um and possible action on ordinance of the city of Mainor, Ta- uh Texas, making a uh finding. Of special benefit to the pub property in improvement area number three of the Mainor Heights Public Improvement District. Providing for the method of assessment of special assessments against property in improvement area three of the district. Approving an assessment role for improvement area three of the district, levying assessment uh against the property within improvement area three of the district. Providing for payment of assessments, providing for penalties and interest on delinquent assessments. Establishing a lien on property within improvement area three of the district. Approving an amended and restated service and assessment plan. Providing for related matters in accordance with chapter three, seven, two, Texas Local Government Code. Providing an effective date and providing for uh severability, yes, ma'am.
Mayor Councilmembers Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney, again, you've had the two public hearings um or. Public hearing regarding this item, item twenty-two, and you have your PID consultants. Uh Bond Counsel is here also to provide some additional information.
Good evening, um as Veronica referenced, this is a follow-up to item number six, which was the public hearing regarding the levying of assessments for the public improvement district. And as I realize that the mayor just read the the caption of the ordinance, and I don't have much to add to that. Um basically, in summary, this is the city council's determination that the parcels within the district. Are receiving a distinct benefit from the public improvements and assigning a value of the benefits received on each of those parcels. And it is levying an assessment in the value of those uh benefits that are received. And it is providing a mechanism for paying and collecting those assessments and. Those payments, as we discussed earlier, will be applied towards payment of the PID bonds, which is the subject of the next item. And as Veronica also alluded to, the city's PID administrators here and to, they can shed a lot of light on the details as to how those values are assessed against the properties. Um with regards to the public improvements.
Any questions or a motion? Uh y'all already bet about this in the PID committee meeting.
What about the people who are not? Not in the PID committee, is there a small high level?
Well, I think that we we uh just came up two meetings ago.
Yes, it's uh June seventh, it was.
One meeting ago.
One meeting ago.
It's been a long week.
It has, it has.
Yeah, so I think, uh because I think Councilmember Moreno spoke on it, um this is just kind of standard um process for um moving the pit along.
And I I want to point out that this process is established by statute, and so we're taking great. Great care to make sure that we adhere with the due process and procedures that are laid out in the statute.
Councilmember Hill, um just background, this is the third improvement area, so Mainor Heights does have. Uh improvement area one, improvement area two, and major improvement areas that have been previously approved. So when the PID committee um got together to look at this, again, it was for a continuation of the project and dealing with improvement area three.
And how many total improvement areas are there? Four.
Thank you, there will be four.
Other questions? Sure. Okay.
Alright, Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance numbers seven zero eight regarding the levy of assessments in improvement area number three. Of Mainor Heights Public Improvement District and approval of the amended and restated service and assessment plan.
We have a motion for by Councilmember Moreno, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Weir, any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? No questions to the motion, all in favor? Oppose, motion passes unanimously, moving right along to number. Consideration discussion, possible action on ordinance of the city of Mainor, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bond Series. Twenty twenty-three Mainor Heights Public Improvement District Improvement Area Number Three Project. Approving and authorizing an indenture indenture of trust, a bond purchase agreement and. Uh a limited offering memorandum, a continuing disclosure agreement and other agreements and documents in connection therewith. Making findings with respect to issuance of such bonds, providing an effective date. You know, lawyers, y'all's writing is nothing but run-ons.
Agreed, Mayor Councilmembers Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney, again, this item number twenty-three, you just had a public hearing, item number seven. And um you heard from Chris Lane, we do have um underwriters counsel here, Bond Counsel will also provide some information. But you, this this is, this is the meat of the ordinance, you, it's an eight hundred page. Um attach, eight hundred, I think, pages of attachments uh along with the ordinance, uh because it does contain several agreements. And if you have any questions of on any of those agreements, again, you have all of the consultants and developers consultants. Here as well to answer any questions and provide additional information, with that, I'll pass it back to Bond Counsel.
Excuse me, um so as as your city attorney alluded to, this is the uh kind of culmination of of tonight's hearings and and items. This is the selling of bonds for the financing of public improvements in the district and. The you'll notice on here that we have an indenture, which is a document that we don't normally have with the bonds that we issue here. Essentially, that is an agreement to control the incoming assessments to make sure that they get distributed and applied correctly. Um both towards paying the developer who constructed the improvements and making sure that the owners of the bonds get paid over the life of the bonds. And just as with other bond transactions that we do, following this meeting, we will have a set of transcript documents for signature. We will take those and combine the transcript and deliver it to the Attorney General's Office for approval. And we anticipate a closing of July twentieth, at which point the funds will be distributed uh to the various accounts.
Just out of curiosity, what was, what's the Mainor community news?
That was determined to be the, let me take a step back, um to meet the statutory requirements for publication. Uh the notice for the creation of the district needs to be published in a paper of general circulation. Uh meaning that it has a certain reach and geographical focus, and this paper at the time was determined to to meet those requirements.
That was the name of it? Okay, that's what I was trying to.
In two thousand eighteen, yeah.
It sounds familiar, but I'm like, I don't think I've seen that in a while.
Right, uh yeah, as mentioned, this pit has been going going on for a while, and so uh during that time, the the name changed. From Community News to Journal.
Yeah, I was like, that looks so familiar, why?
Yeah, I think there was language in one of the public hearings where it said Mainor Journal, yeah, so.
I'll just, I was just, I was trying to remember what it was, I'm like, it looks familiar, but I cannot remember what that was. Any other questions, uh more relevant questions? Take questions or a motion then.
Mayor Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number seven zero nine. Issuing Mainor Heights Public Improvement District Improvement Area Number Three Bonds and approving an indenture of trust. Bond purchasing agreement, limited offering memorandum and continuing disclosure agreement of issuer.
We have a motion on for by Councilwoman Wallace, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilmember Moreno, any questions to the motion? Any questions to the motion? No questions to the motion, all in favor? Posen, motion passes, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ma'am, serves, thank you all. Uh item number twenty-five, are we going executive now? And they come back. Okay, consideration discussion, possible action on a proposed um uh bond proposition. Mr. Moore?
Mayor Council, this item was before you, um from the workshop we had earlier, just to give more direction on. Proposed bond proposition that you'd like to see uh developed and then analyzed for the financial impact to our community. And we want to make sure we, if we have to look at categories, which categories you want to focus on and. Be able to develop those propositions for you to. In the market your life, so that we can bring that back to you.
From my notes, I heard from a couple council members that mentioned, a couple council members mentioned. Wanting to utilize the ladder numbers. Because of the expected growth in addition to. because of the expected growth in addition to the service area usage around from the ETJ and further. So I think that's maybe some data right there for style to consider. Was there any council members that were in opposition or had something else different they wanted, they thought regarding which set of numbers to use, the fifty-five or the hundred thousand?
No, I personally agree that we should have that data.
Okay, and then, let's see, I think we're being asked in regards to these projects, which is, um, what is our priority? And we were given three areas, quality of life, public safety, and economic development. We had discussion in regards to public safety, possibly being taken out because it could be done without having to go to the voters for approval, which then leaves, and for consideration, in the, the bonds part, uh, quality of life and economic development, quality of life to be including a multipurpose, uh, city hall facility with consideration of library facilities, rec center with, or, um, I think with, was it with the aquatic? Is that what you all were thinking, or was that just a question I was asking?
I would like to see it with the aquatic.
A rec center with the aquatic and then land for, for future park space. Is what I have in my notes in the area defined as quality of life. Am I missing anything from any of you all? That was, um, thought to have been in that section of quality of life? And then economic development being the section then with, um, um, I think there were some improvements towards downtown and, um, downtown development, so it was downtown urban design, so the streetscape enhancements, and then downtown development. And I'm assuming any land acquisition that would spark economic development. I think that's it. Am I missing any areas that you all were talking about earlier in the workshop? Something about it?
I think another thing too is infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
I mean, I think that would be another category, because that would tie into infrastructure, economic development. And make sure we address that because of the doubt that infrastructure, economic would be limited.
So we talked about infrastructure, um, uh, being outside of the bond. And, um, and then we talked with our bond folks and, and we had the call discussion about, you know, in November, we could go for the things that we wanted. Um, and then we would need to be able to look at our current budget to ensure that we made necessary budgetary decisions to hit the things we want to prioritize. And so I think one of the things we know for sure, we're directing staff, is the hundred thousand range for designing. Correct, you're right? Okay. The other thing then, now we need to give them, um, I guess, what we would like to see in the spaces. So do you, are you, are you all wanting to see in the bond, the quality of life and economic development and, and public safety? Or do you want to use, I guess, some of the conversation that was had in regards to the, the splitting out and then trying to adjust the budget to see what can all be done? What is you all's preference? Or thoughts in regards to? Did I explain that right? No? We, we were talking about every, we were talking about the original list of, I think it had one forty-seven, and it had five items in there. City Hall, Library, with the references, one, two thing, that's there. Uh, there was a, the police station, there was a warehouse, and then there was the rec center. And then we got into discussion about, um, that public safety did not need to go through the voters. Uh, Mr. Frank mentioned that, hey, y'all, we got some crucial stuff we got to happen with the wheelbar, um, wheelbarter thing, it's twenty million, uh, that we really got to pay attention to, because it's going to be crucial for major infrastructure. Then we talked about the police station, um, and those pieces, and it could, uh, be done outside of the bond. So then we started talking about eighty, eighty million outside of the bond. And then the, the question I asked was, okay, does that leave the one forty? She said we could go for, we can ask the voters for all that, but we don't have to issue the bonds all at one time. We could do it, you know, based off of how basically our funding and our availability with how we make the decision now regarding budget and all the impact fees and all those kinds of things. So now we're in the space of making the decision and then doing a balancing act with the budget based off of what we just say are our priorities. And so we need to say, do we want to, what we want to try to, we need to give them direction on the, uh, as much as possible just in the bond only, or if we want to try to separate those things out and, uh, from there. And I think part of that conversation is, what will voters vote for? Will they, if they saw, um, facility options, would they only pick something, then they'll leave some, leaving something not to be done that we think is, needs to be done? And if it's something we need, we think needs to be done, um, do it, does it, does it need to be done now? Does it need to be done later, and so forth? That's what they're asking for. Is that better? Or did I confuse everybody again? Better? Little bit? Maybe ask a question, and maybe we can get the clarification through the question. Well, you were the one that said, shake your head earlier, so.
Oh, I'll manage, but I think I like the second option that will allow us to be able to split and then divide and things like that. I think naming that, um, adding the infrastructure in, um, and possibly taking out one of those other areas like the public safety, those seem to be able to hit some of the things that mainly most of the community has been asking for, or they'll see the benefit of, especially with the infrastructure piece, I think. Because if that makes a difference with our brown water, whether we have it or not, then yes, and just even with the flow of things, so I think it works.
So you're saying add the water, wastewater into the, the election bond, or to do it outside of the election bond?
If it can't be done outside of it, sure, without affecting, um, how much we'll feel it in our pocketbooks as residents, then okay, but if not, then.
Put it in the bond.
It can go in, if that helps it.
Now, here's the, here's the, the catch. If we put it in the bond, infrastructure in the bond, and the voters say no, then we cannot go back and use those obligation funds that are available to us right now. We have to wait three years now, not five.
For now.
Three for now, until, and, and election coming up. But for now, we would have to wait three years. We could go back and do the following November and do another bond thing, but if they say no the first time to it, they may say no again. So if it's something, so I think if we want to see the infrastructure happen, or if, if we want to agree with what our engineers say, and we want to make sure it gets done, and he's saying, and City Manager, y'all are saying that it has to be done, I think there's two ways to get it done, right? One is take it, ask the voters to pay for it, the other is doing it, um, through the obligations and using those fees and those other kinds of things to try to cover it. That way it's not a, it's, it's not a possibility, so.
So when you're saying the other fees, you mean the impact fees? Yeah, that's the one, that's the. Yeah, that's the one.
Does that make sense? Makes sense?
Wasn't on that time, I was leaving that. Oh, I like the, the other op, the mayor's option of using the impact fees, I'm too afraid to put it to the chance that if someone doesn't understand the language or if it isn't clear enough, they'll say no, not understanding what I was involved in, how badly it's needed, and then we're stuck with waiting three years or having to wait, period. I just, Frank's sense of urgency is weighing on me, and so I, I, I want to make sure we get it done.
Okay.
I agree with Councilwoman Anne.
So, so in the bond, are we saying we want to see quality of life?
I think the, the voters want to see quality of life.
Quality of life and economic development.
Quality of life and economic development.
That's what my data tells me.
Would you want to see like, I guess, two propositions?
It sounds like two. The one, the one together. I think, I think what council would like to see, that multipurpose facility of City Hall and Library.
And that included the rec center as well, right?
That would be, that would be one.
Okay.
And then proposition B would be the rec center.
Why does it have to be on the steps more? I don't understand why that one has to be stepping. Qual, the rec center wasn't part of the quality of life, so.
No, it's quality of life, but it, you can't have all the facilities in one proposition.
Oh.
So, but we would want the library and City Hall together. So that's proposition A, and then B would be, um, uh, Recreation Center. And then are we saying to try to look at the, the police station as a priority still? And, and, and the other one? No?
If we can do the police station without having to take it to the voters, I would prefer to do that.
Others? Thoughts, questions?
May I ask a point of clarity?
Yes, sir.
Just to confirm, City Hall and the library being looked at as one facility?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Police?
Outside of the bond.
Outside of the bond? That would be the same thing. Uh, that's why I raised the question in the workshop, was when, years back when we first talked about it, it was, you know, we didn't need to necessarily go to the voters, uh, regardless of the public safety thing. So if we, same thing, if we take it to the voters and they're like, I don't want to pay that much for a police station, then, like, we can't go back and do it, it's done. And so.
Would the rec center and the warehouse, is the warehouse facility even involved in this? Because we haven't talked much about it.
We, we didn't, we, when we said quality of life, we didn't include that in that definition of quality of life. So that's, that's, and then I think money-wise, you all, when, when, we all agreed on the hundred thousand, that those projections kind of cut off some other things.
And I would say too, Council, when you look at, um, what the citizens would see, just that on the warehouse, they would see a benefit.
That was, that was, that was my, that was my feeling too.
So I think when we look at that item, we can look at the budget and kind of figure out when we need to build something out and tie it back to if we're going to be partnering with Travis County in emergency storing of items. Because right now, during an ice storm, we have stuff stored at the whole, uh, volunteer fire department way out there. So when it's, something needs to be centrally located. So when we double back and look at that, we can make sure we, that the commissioner know, and T D O know, and all the emergency response people know that if we build something, to be, hopefully have enough space to store some of the critical emphasis, and items we need here, rather than scattered too far away.
Well, and, and maybe you're looking to see if any of the, uh, other public entities are, have funding to just construct out here versus us having to construct anything, um, multipurpose, multi-use between all the different entities. You know, county, state, districts, all that.
So if you look at the numbers, that fourteen to twenty-two million, if we can get into the conversation where we identify partners, that's something we should have to entertain with the voters to consider. Just focus on the, the infrastructure, where the citizens would see they would get a benefit from directly.
All right, so the, feel like you're confident with direction?
Yes, sir. So I'd see two propositions, A and B.
I think my thought would be to have, uh, a C, which would be for land acquisition for parks. And a D, which would be for whatever, uh, economic development project we would, we would be able to define between now and then, pending, I guess, somebody that's available. But I think if, that would be my, my priorities. A, like in, in order, I don't know what my answers would be, but that's what I was saying, is have, add a C for an acquisition for, for park space. And then D, uh, something, whatever, whatever's allowable. And, and seeing, maybe get Jones when he returns. I know, we've talked about some things that could potentially be, uh, land acquisition for that, so.
Yeah, I was just to follow up, then when Mr. Jones gets back, I can speak with him and we can kind of line out what some of those economic development items might look like, and see how they'd fall under a proposition.
That's what this means?
I, I, I agree with that. Yeah, I, I agree with the land acquisition for sure, yeah.
And for, for both, or, or just for parks?
For both, yeah.
I agree, I agree with, for both.
I keep forgetting, okay. Prop A, City Hall and Library. Prop B, Recreation Center. Prop C, land acquisition for park space, and, um, D, economic development. Is that correct understanding?
Sorry, I keep jumping up, guys.
Does it have to be separate, or does it need?
Uh, which, which ones to?
She's saying C.
Is for land.
Land acquisition for park space. And D, land acquisition or?
For economic development. And so, and I would keep those separate, off the top of my head, I'd keep them separate because they're two different purposes, unless you can tie them together somehow. Uh, but the other thing I was thinking of, i- if, it might be worth having a discussion about combining C and B if it's under the rubric of recreation, you know?
That's why I asked the question about tying the multi-use facility and the, the aquatics and the recreation center all together.
So we would not have a C, it would just be Recreation Center and land acquisition for parks, whatever.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be worth it to look at that. Yeah, I think it'd be worth it to look at that. And then with regards to land for parks, is there an identified park that will go on this land right now? Or is it just planning ahead for when the population gets that size?
Matt went through and the comprehensive plan. In there, we got P R one, P R eighteen, P R twenty, P R twenty-five, P R nineteen, P R thirty-eight. And it's talking about things that we wanted to make, that we saw in our future. The challenge is, we also are aware that there's about to be a twenty-twenty-four bond maybe? If they don't move up to twenty-twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four. Yeah, so their county's about to do a bond, and they're about to do two hundred million. And so, uh, we stand a chance of not having any land in this space, um, to acquire to do the parks we want to do, because they have, the committee is, is very set on nature preserves, which means the area we would like to do for parks and these recreational spaces would, wouldn't that no longer be available?
Okay.
Be a preserve. And so, uh, uh, without knowing what they're going to do, but just knowing how much they're about to spend on it, that's, that's why it became a concern of, okay, we got these items, if they do two hundred million, which most of that, at least half, if not more, is want to be in East Travis County. That very means we want to have space to do some of these larger things we want to do.
Okay.
Is it okay to, to say that we should specify that some of that land is used for a multi-purpose facility, like a sports complex?
I think that's where, I think he's combined, so I think.
So it's, it's going to just say Recreation Center or recreational?
What I'm imagining is, um, design, construction, acquisition of land for parks and recreational facilities such as, yeah, such as a recreation center, aquatic center.
That's, that's good.
And what, yeah. And so one of the things that talk, I can talk with Mr. Moore about after this is the degree of specificity we need with regards to the land. Because my one question in the back of my mind is, well, I'll just leave it at that. We can talk about it, so we just need to figure out how it's going to be worded specifically in the proposition.
Well, there's some, so there's land that's in the, it's got, um, there's land in, in the future lands map. There's kind of like, hey, this type of area would be good for, for city parks. And then, then there's some areas that we are really interested in looking at, uh, looking into. So that, I know some of those places are going to be designated, so, uh, so I think looking at that future land map and then seeing what's available for sale, and then the staff team kind of making that determination of this would be a better spot for this versus that, and and then, then seeing what actually can be done financially.
Would it be possible to, when the, like, put it this way, after the acquisition of the land, would it be possi- would we be envisioning like how much time between acquiring and putting in a trail or some benches or a fence that would make it have some park-like, you know, usable as a park? Not a fully built-out park necessarily, but, you know, something that's maintained. Chairs, a picnic bench. Again, that, that's one of the things we can talk about afterwards, yeah.
I saw, I think what, what you're saying might be very useful towards what, um, especially when we talk about, Chris was talking about, you can get the vote, and then you don't have to issue the things right away.
Right.
But in my mind, conversations with them, once if we identify a person, then we would probably start talking with different people to try to make sure that it doesn't go anywhere, a two-way way to, to do those kind of things.
Right, yeah, so just Chris was saying, you'd have the authority to sell fifty million dollars of bonds to buy that whenever you want to draw that down? So, okay.
You have to be able to pay for it. Just a little thing.
All right. So we don't have an action item, we just give a document, so. If you can claim, thank you, ma'am. City Council, we're now convening to exact concessions pursuant to the provisions of Chapter five-five-one, text government code in accordance with the authority contained in Sections five-five-one point zero seven-one, five-five-one point zero eight-seven, text government code in Section one point zero five, text of displea- of professional conduct to the self. We'll leave Council regarding trotting impede in Section five-five-one point zero seven-one, text government code in Section one point zero five, just text of displea- of professional conduct to consult legal counsel regarding the Blue Buff Development, Section five-five-one point zero seven-one, Section five-five-one point zero eight-seven, text government code to deliberate on land acquisition of real property and Section five-five-one point zero seven-four, personnel minus three, to discuss the study regarding employee compensation.
Red? Time is eleven thirty-eight and City Council will now reconvene into open session. We're starting to the provisions of chapter five by one Texas government code to take action if any on items discussed during close executive session. Uh, there's no items to discuss and vote on. This meeting is now adjourned.